Our first item of business is to reorganize the board for this upcoming fiscal year. I guess I'm open for nominations. Somebody want to nominate somebody for something?
I nominate Steve Boulay for chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, I'll nominate Mr. Thomas for clerk. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You want to nominate?
I nominate Mr. Rodolakis for vice chair.
Any questions or comments? And just have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the board basically stays the same. Our next item of business is to review and approve minutes. We have no minutes for this month. Our next item of business is to review and sign bills. Quite an extensive list tonight. First one is for Taiton Howard, one Greenbrier Drive for $3,500. Next is McMahon Associates for one Greenbrier Drive, $2,170. Next is for Graves Engineering, one Greenbrier Drive, $1,749. Graves Engineering, 83 Suntech Boulevard. Oh, these are site plan reviews, I apologize. I'll back up. So Taiton Howard is for the hydraulic review for one Greenbrier Drive. McMahon Associates for one Greenbrier Drive was for traffic review. Graves Engineering for one Greenbrier Drive was second site plan review. Next item is Graves Engineering, 83 Suntech Boulevard for site plan review, $869. Graves Engineering, 193 Hartford Turnpike Site Plan Review, $1,764.83. Graves Engineering, 195 Main Street Site Plan Review for $1,278. Graves Engineering for 56 to 66 South Quinsigammon Avenue Site Plan Review, $1,317. Graves Engineering for 440 Hartford Turnpike Site Plan Review, $2,445.83. And the final Graves Engineering for Falcon Farm Site Plan Review for $1,924. Total bills to be paid, $17,044.66. Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the expenditures as read by the chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I should mention, oh, I can get to this at the board member comments in a moment. When we get to board member comments, I just would like to mention that Mr. Rodolakis is currently not here but is expected to be here in about an hour or so. And Mr. Rao is absent, absent tonight. And Mr. Iliadi will be sitting in on any special permits for this evening. With that, board member comments. Mr. Jerry.
I have no comments this month. Thank you.
Mr. Thomas.
No comments this month, sir.
Mr. Cahill?
No comment.
And other than the comment I mentioned earlier, I have no additional comments. We just start to our first hearing. It's a new public hearing for proposed bank and retail building site plan approval for location 195 Main Street. Although he's not here, Mr. Rodolakis will be recusing himself from this entire hearing going forward. Mr. Thomas, could you please read the legal notice?
Shrewsbury Planning Board, as special, as the special permit granting authority, will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, July 14th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. in the Sleckman's Meeting Room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue, Shrewsbury, Mass. To hear the application of Cornerstone Bank, 230 Park Avenue, Worcester, Mass. 01609, for special permit and site plan approval by the planning board to allow for the construction of a retail building and a bank. Special permit is required by the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, section 6.C. Aquifer Protection Overlay District and Site Plan Approval is required by the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, section 7.F.3. Proposed development is shown on plans entitled "Site Development Plan for 195 Main Street" in nine sheets dated June 13th, 2022, prepared by J.M. Granier and Associates Incorporated, 118 Turnpike Road, Suite 200, South Brom, Mass. 01772. Stamped by Todd P. Chapin, PLS, and John M. Granier, PE. The subject property is located north of Main Street, west of Thessalon Drive, and consists in whole or in part of Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 20, plots 046000. A copy of the application and plans may be seen in the office of the Planning and Economic Development Department at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue, Shrewsbury, Mass., and on the planning board website.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Will the applicant please introduce themselves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Respectfully, my name is Richard Ricker, for the record. I know you know me, but Richard Ricker and my law offices are at 11 Maple Avenue. With me tonight is Todd Towman, who's the president of Cornerstone Bank. He's sitting to my right. Also Peter Brown, who is our Boston counsel for the ZBA appeal, which is ongoing, which I'll mention, we'll discuss a little bit, I'm sure. And John Granier, our engineer, is here to discuss the actual plans. Mindful of the comments of the planning department and Graves, I won't repeat all those things because it's not necessary, obviously, but I would note that I think that we've hit most of the points. There are a couple of points that, obviously, John needs, is going to be addressing. Cornerstone Bank, as you know, wants to locate in Shrewsbury for a good reason. It's a good bank. It's a good community. We all like the community. They do, too. They want to be a good neighbor. They want to be a good community member. They have a great reputation in other communities. They participate. They are a community bank. They're not a large giant bank. They are a community bank, and they play that role well. They donate to local causes. They participate in local events and causes. They want to do that here in Shrewsbury. By way of background and how we got, where we are right now, we've been to the ZBA, as you know. There were two special permits that we needed with the ZBA. I noted in the planning comments that I was asked to discuss that background. The special permits were, one for the alteration of a non-conforming setback, a building that had a non-conforming setback. It had a non-conforming setback of, I think, around 68 feet. The setback for the proposed bank, oh, 67 feet. The setback for the proposed bank is one foot less than, one foot more than that. I get confused on there. But one foot more than that, and as you are aware, that's allowed by special permit because it is grandfathered as a prior non-conforming setback of a structure. So obviously, the bank would like to continue to use that setback, and this plan is utilizing the setback at around 60...
It is 68.3 feet.
68.3 feet. The second, and the ZBA saw fit to approve that, and that is in litigation, has been litigation for just about, how many years, Peter?
Couple of years.
Couple of years. We are, we understand that it is getting to the point where it's going to reach the trial point. As you are aware, we can, at our own risk, move forward while that is pending, and that is our intent, is to try to move things along with the intent that, once the ZBA matter is concluded, we can move forward. The other special permit with the ZBA was for the drive-through for a bank. A bank isn't allowed use, as you know, in this district, but the drive-through requires a special permit. And the ZBA determined that there was no nuisance. There was no, no problem. There was no, basically, no nuisance value whatsoever to the fact that the bank wanted what is an ancillary use anyway to a bank and what all banks want, which is a drive-through. So the ZBA did approve that, and that's the background for the ZBA action. It's two special permits. There were no variances, just the special permits. So tonight, we're here for, obviously, a site plan review and to talk about the Aqua Fur and compliance with the Aqua Fur District Regulations. I was pleased to note the comments in the Graves report in that respect, and as I'm sure we all are. And with that, perhaps John can get into the plan.
Sure. Thank you again, John Granier, J.M. Granier Associates, on behalf of the applicant. I think everybody's familiar with this site. It's along Main Street on the Westley section, heading towards 290. St. Vincent's has a spot on number 181 Main Street, which is just adjacent to this parcel. There is an existing structure that has been a business for a number of years on this site, so it has been traditionally a commercial use. This site is located within the limited commercial business zoning district, but within the Aqua Fur Protection Overlay District. The criteria for the Aqua Fur Protection Overlay District is if you have impervious areas greater than 15% on-site, you're required to recharge that water back into the ground so that you're putting water back into the aquifer. So what we are proposing, it is one structure, the connection between the bank structure, which is 1,670 square feet located in this location. There is a covered canopy, and that's where the drive-through would be, and attached to that is a, another retail building, which is 6,525 square feet located on the Westley side. There is access on the Easterly side. There's a 26-foot-wide entrance that is two-way. That gives access into the site. You can loop around the site, and then there is a one-way exit on the Westley side of the site in this area. So for both the bank use and the retail use, we have adequate parking between the, we need one space for every 250 square feet for the retail, and then the bank space that is also, has parking requirements based on the number of tellers and service, service areas to handle customers. So with that, the total parking required for the site is 48 parking spaces, and we're providing 48 parking spaces on-site. And those areas are located, there's 20 spaces along the front, frontage. There's another eight spaces located on the Easterly side of the bank. There's another 20 spaces located at the rear portion of the site, and then in front of the other retail space, there are another, one, two, three, four, five, six parking spaces located in that area. In terms of the drive-through, we have adequate area and queuing locations for cars to queue up going through the drive-through. It would be, as most banks do, there is one drive-up window that is just adjacent to the building, so you're right at the window, and then there is a second, a second queuing line so that you can have one other work area where you can go remotely and service, and get serviced by the, by the attendant at the bank. In terms of the drainage, as I had mentioned, we're required to recharge runoff into the ground if we're greater than 15%. We are accomplishing that by having two separate subsurface recharge areas, one located along the frontage on the Easterly side and one at the rear portion of the site on the Easterly side as well. So we're capturing both the roof runoff and the pavement runoff. We're treating that runoff, and then we're recharging that into the ground. We did testing on-site with Graves Engineering. They're actually very good soils. Typically, in the Aqua Fur Protection Zone, you find that there are good, more sandy, gravelly soils, and that is also the case on this site. So we're able to capture all the runoff, keep it more of a flat pad site. We don't have any big open detention basins, anything that's unsightly, so we're able to accommodate that subsurface on, on the Easterly side of the site. In terms of snow storage areas, we have plenty of room for snow storage. Off the front parking area, we have snow storage areas along the frontage. Off the back parking, parking row, we have ample snow storage area off the back as well. So we have plenty of area for snow storage on-site, so I don't believe there would be any need for trucking snow off-site in the event of large storm events. This project, I note, will be, will be phased. So the first phase will be the construction of the bank portion of the building itself. The second phase would be construction of the other retail portion of the building, and it, right now, it's the intent to do all of the infrastructure, do all of the pavement, do all of the parking, and just leave this rectangular section that would encompass, basically, the limit of the curbing and the proposed Westley section of the building, and that would just be grassed for now. That would be phase two of the project. The timing on that, we're really, we're not sure of at this point, but we're coming in with a comprehensive plan so you see what the full build-out of the entire site is going to be. One other item that was brought up, in terms of Graves Engineering, we feel comfortable with, you know, everything is, functions properly, the design is proper. In terms of the physical layout of the site, there was one comment from the fire department in this one-way exit. Right now, as you know, Main Street was recently improved a couple of years ago. There's a moratorium into Main Street. There is a 16-foot-wide curb cut that exists in this location, so we were maintaining that. It was commented from the fire department that they would like to see this be a 20-foot-wide curb cut, which we agree with. And once the moratorium is lifted off of Main Street, which I think we're two years, two years or so into it, we're more than, more than happy to widen that up about two feet on either side of the existing curb line. And we don't think that would really pose a problem in the short term where the bank itself is just going to be phase one, there's going to be no, no other building going on immediately. So if that would be a condition of approval, that once the moratorium is lifted, we widen that to 20 feet, I think my client would be, would be fine with that as being a condition of approval. Landscaping, there is existing screening on the Easterly portion of the site to the abutting property. There are rather large, mature evergreen pine trees located in the rear portion, and what my client is proposing for additional screening is a six-and-a-half-foot privacy fence that would continue from the end of the existing evergreens down past the building to about, in, I believe, this location right here. So this whole length, that would be in the view corridor of the abutting property, would be screened by fencing. In addition, as I said, there is existing evergreen areas right there. We are waiting for our landscape architect to finalize the landscaping interior of the site. We do have plenty of green space and green areas around the parking, so he is going to be fine-tuning a nice-looking landscape plan just for the interior portions. But exterior, we feel that there is good screening, particularly to the Easterly side. The grade at the rear portion goes up fairly dramatically, especially off-site. Our site is at about elevation 435, and we're at like 445 in the back corner, so there's about a 10-foot grade differential from properties to both the, both the west and the north of the site. So we don't think there's an issue with screening from abutting properties in terms of nuisance, and this is already, obviously, a commercial use to, to the west of us. We're also waiting for a final lighting plan to be generated, but as, as is typical, we are going to be proposing full cutoff light fixtures, nothing that's going to spill light off on the adjacent properties. It's, I think the majority of the lighting will be off of the building, and there will be some just for security adjacent to some of the parking areas, but nothing that would be spilling off, but we'll be providing that within the next, probably by next week. We'll have both of those, those two plans wrapped up so that the board can review those as well. I think I covered on, on most of the big topics. Richard, if you have anything else to say or if the board has any questions?
If I could, Mr. Chairman, just to follow up. I have two additional reports I could approach.
Sure.
Which I have emailed to the planning department today to know that we're going to be back. And these reports are, sorry, these reports are an additional traffic study that was done in connection with the litigation in Land Court Boston, and the additional report is a noise study report, which addresses the noise factors for the neighboring properties. And I'm pleased to say that I think, that I think that they support our contention that the noise factor is minimal at best. Most of the noise down there on Main Street is from the traffic, and it's that background traffic noise that is what they say pretty much drowns out just about everything down there. So the, the effect of the drive-through in that respect is minimal, according to that, that report. I would also point out that the elevations that are, that you have for the buildings are a slightly smaller footprint than what was approved at the zoning board of appeals, and, and quite a bit shorter, and they don't have the height of the original approval. We went from, I think, 32 feet in the, in the tower, down to about 19 feet. This was all to try to address the concerns of the, of the neighbors. And it is, it also affects the branding of Cornerstone. It affects what they do in the future, so it was a fairly significant move on their part to do that, because they'd already built other banks, as you can imagine. So we ran that by the, the building department and planning as far as whether we need to go back to the ZBA, and the determination was that we do not, because it's a smaller footprint and, and less height, so therefore, the decision of the ZBA stands.
And if you have any questions, we'd be pleased to answer them.
Sure. I actually have a couple of questions. So obviously, in whatever decision is mentioned, as you mentioned, the ZBA decision, ZBA decisions that you've already been granted will be placed in that.
Yes.
So depending on how the land court goes, that'll take care of that, right?
Yes.
Question about the, the second exit being widened after the moratorium, and this is just a question, so don't get freaked out, okay?
It's because you got re-elected.
So you're not planning on building the retail space immediately?
Not immediately, but, but...
So the condition that was proposed by Mr. Granier was that you would come back and do a site plan adjustment at that point when the moratorium is over to extend that road to the recommended?
Well, we're hoping, we're hoping that your decision can address that. We're hoping that your decision can say, when the moratorium is over, the five-year moratorium on work on Main Street, that you would expect us to widen that entrance at that time without coming back for a modification.
So you anticipate that the structure will be built inside of that moratorium?
I would anticipate that it would be. I wouldn't expect otherwise.
Okay, so do you have some sort of a plan that addresses maybe the safety concerns that the fire department has relative to the width?
Well... John, do you want to address that?
I can, I can have a conversation with the deputy chief and see if there's anything that we could do in interim, maybe not install curbing right away so they, they still have the ability to drive a little bit wider if necessary without, without hitting the curb. There's a few options I think that we can discuss with them.
Okay. I think that's what...
It was more of informative for myself to understand what, what could potentially be done in the future, should, you know, everything go way there.
Our, our plans have, have all been geared towards the full build-out, so what you see is, is what you get. It's the full build-out that we're talking about. We have just determined, the bank has determined, that they want to phase it and get the bank up and running, and then see how the, the site works, and, and then move forward with the retail after that, so.
Okay. The only other question I have, so I, I agree that the fencing along the, we'll call it the Easterly side of the property, as I look at the plan...
That is as recommended in the noise study.
Would certainly help with the light, because this is going to have a lot of potential vehicles going through. I, I don't see where the structure in the backside, where Five Dana Road is. I know you mentioned that there's like 10-foot elevation change, but how far away? I'm just concerned, the light noise, because the traffic is going to be flowing directly towards that space, and should there potentially be a fence back there to help offset that, too?
I know that the, well, the short answer is, I believe it's quite a ways away, what the exact footage is.
It is quite a bit of woods back there.
Okay.
And there is a grade...
I've spoken to Mike Gregory about that, and we're going to do a walkthrough up there. His concern mostly is, in fact, I know he's watching tonight, and he said that he was, he was fine with the proposal, but his concern is cleaning up those woods, because there's a lot of trash back there, and he, he wanted to clean them up. And of course, Todd, and I've discussed it, and that's obviously doable. He wants us to clean up the woods, and there is a sizable amount of woodland back there.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jerry, you have any questions?
I'm just trying to understand, when I look at the elevations here, the way you have the canopy between the two buildings, is it contemplated that one of the potential tenants there could also have a drive-through? Is that the intention?
That is not the intention. The intention is that the drive, drive-through is, those lanes are solely for the, for the bank.
Okay. So it's just for the aesthetic of it to cover it across?
Yeah, we, we think it would be counterintuitive to have the two drive-throughs coming in from the same direction, trying to hit two different drive-throughs, so it just won't work. And mind you, the concentration here is for the bank.
Yep. Okay. Yeah, my, my other question was just about the entrances and exits, just understanding the traffic from here. Will people be able to turn left out of the site from both of these exits and what that looks like? But I guess the traffic study, we haven't seen yet, so we'll, I guess, take a look at that.
Yep, so you, you now have two traffic studies.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The traffic study is, is all we need to see. I'm, I'm good with everything else. I think everything else is, is fine.
All right, so as was mentioned by Mr. Granier, we do have a requirement for a landscape plan, so that's forthcoming. You mentioned something else, I...
The lighting plan.
Part of a lighting plan as well.
Right. And, and obviously, the lighting has to be down, downlighting. It has to be dark sky compliant, and, and we, we understand that, and I'm sure the neighbors are interested in seeing what the lighting plan is going to be, so with that respect, we'd be looking...
My apologies, we have a little side thing going on up here.
Hey, what are you doing up there?
I didn't notice.
It's not me, it has nothing to do with me. It was a typo on the agenda, and that's my fault. The legal notice was the typo. Should have said special permit as well as site plan for that Aqua Fur Protection Overlay District. We'll correct it for the...
With the fact that this is a special permit, Mr. Iliadi can sit in on this, and can go to him now with any questions or comments he has.
Traffic is the only thing mine, because I know I frequent that place sometimes. My doctor is over there. Taking a left there, you cross yourself and then close your eyes and take a left. So that's my only concern.
Okay. Mr. Cahill, do you have any questions or comments?
I have none. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard? Sir, please introduce yourself. There's actually a microphone, I believe. If you could come up to there, please. Give me your name and address, I'd appreciate it.
My name is Larry Gannon. I live at 239 Main Street. I have a lot of problems with this. I have a lot of problems with this. You people have been spot zoning that neighborhood, and you've got no wayward murder with it, but now you want to go into a commercial, you want to make it a commercial zone is basically what you want to do. You want to put retail space in there, you want to put a bank in there, you know, I know you're going to tell me, the road is rather abused right now, there's a lot of traffic on that road, a lot of trailer trucks, a lot of cars, and we have people who live there, and now you want to make it commercial. You know, I don't have a problem, because I can always unload my house, but I feel bad for the people who live on the other side of the street, because they all have small lots. They don't have property that any commercial business wants, because they don't have the space, they don't have the thing. And what you're going to do with that is, you're going to, you're going to put that thing in the middle of it, you're going to have a convenience store, a bank, whatever you have in there, it just doesn't fit the neighborhood, because you just changed the neighborhood as it is, and you're just going to make it more commercial, and the next thing you know, the whole thing is going to be commercial, on this, on my side, the street. And it's all because you've allowed special permits for all these people to do all this. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, take that under advisement. Yes, sir, please introduce yourself.
Good evening. Francis Bro, I'm a lifetime resident of Shrewsbury, and I live at 203 Main Street, which is roughly 130, 35 feet away from the property line of this proposed commercial property. We're talking about a hundred-foot buffer from residential, which I believe was misstated, because my background is in construction, I'm also a certified building inspector through the state of Massachusetts. Once a structure is completely removed, it reverts back to the zoning of what is in place at the time. Shrewsbury put in a 100-foot buffer to protect its residents. They're proposing a bank and a certain size retail. We had talked to them about reducing the size, they agreed, but then the lawyer left, and a new lawyer took over, and that was rescinded. All we're asking for is the 100-foot buffer and know what's going into the retail space, because if you look at the plans, and you look at them carefully, it shows three drive-up windows, one for the bank, one for the middle, and one on the outside. That could be a coffee shop, it could be a Burger King, it could be anything. We need to know what they're putting in, because that's the only way we can know what the effect is to us in our way of life, in our quality of life. Also, the actual print that was presented, this is a copy of the print that was presented to the ZBA, a picture of a generic bank, no retail, nothing, just a picture of a bank from all four segments, that's what the ZBA decided on. Then all of a sudden, we've got 5,000, 6,000, 7,000 square feet of retail space going in. That's my second point. Third point is traffic. That was done, if you look at the date, after St. John's got out, you all live in the town, you know what it's like down there during rush hour. Sometimes I sit six, seven, eight minutes to get out of my driveway. There's been eight accidents, I've counted, that required police to show up, from Lakeland Segman, Shrewsbury Line, to O'Mill Road, to Settle Lights. Two of them were rollover accidents from people trying to get out of the side street. They're proposing a bank, and we all know, when do you stop at the bank? On your way home or on your way to work? It's going to be during rush hour, there's going to be accidents. The study I don't think is accurate, because I can show you pictures out of my front window at eight, nine o'clock in the morning, where the traffic is backed up from O'Mill Road all the way down to the post office, okay? I've had my mailbox taken out three times from people trying to go around cars, they are trying to make a left-hand turn, I believe, I'm not sure, at a street right across from my house. It's not depicted by the council here. Also, hours of operation. What are the hours of operation? We don't know if it's a 24-hour McDonald's, we don't know if the bank is going to run 24 hours a day, they're going to have a speaker system, we have somebody that's, you know, a few feet away, going to listen to that speaker all night out their bedroom window. There's no reason, they can't reduce their commercial property, take the hit, and stay 100 feet away. Give her a buffer zone, she's lived there her whole life. There was a, there was a house with two people that used it as an office, they went in at nine in the morning, they left at five in the afternoon. That's like commercial, not commercial, bank, fast food, or whatever's going in there, which nobody will say, because they say, well, we don't know. Well, why do you put drive-up windows? If it's a dress shop, they're not going to use a drive-up window. That's, you know, the prints are here, and you should make note of that, that it shows drive-up windows there, because we all, I, we do, as neighbors, we all know what's going in there. You look at the size, look at the square footage, it's a coffee shop and a square footage of a fast food place. It's exactly the amount they want. I can show you a dozen projects with the exact same measurements. That's why they're so hell-bent on getting those measurements, okay? The other thing, the hours of operation, but, lighting and sound, it may, it may not be obnoxious during the day, I agree, but how about two o'clock in the morning when somebody pulls up with their boombox playing and the convertible down, five feet from her, 15 feet from her window, and goes up to the drive-up window? Or they go for fast food at two o'clock in the morning when the bars are closing or midnight, it's going to be a nuisance, and it's going to be more detrimental than what was there, obviously. And that's written right into the code, it can't be more detrimental, and it can't cause harm to people's quality of life. Drainage, this is a good one. Their whole lot pitches to the east, okay? If you look at the maps, the overlay for this property, that whole area in the back behind my house, behind Mrs. Arizzi's house, and a portion of this house is a flood zone. They're going to increase the flood zone. I've already got complaints to the town, because the Army Corps of Engineers put a trench through town property, which abuts mine, and it floods every year, and it gets worse and worse and worse. We put this in with all that pavement, and snow removal, they're going to push it to the back, it's going to end up on our property, because that's the way it grades. There's a lot of things to consider in this. The other thing to consider is that the ZBA is still in litigation, which Mr. Rick had told you, and obviously, this is going to go in with that eventually, if it's, something isn't resolved between Cornerstone and the neighbors. So, it's all, I mean, that's really all I have to say. I just want you guys aware that there's a house there, and two people used it, came in in the morning and left in the afternoon. This is, this is way, way beyond what was there, all right, so it's going to be much more detrimental. And I have nothing against, you know, improvements for the town. We have eight banks, maybe nine, I'm not sure, I might have missed one. We have eight banks, four of which are less than a half a mile away from where this bank is going at. You know, if it was something that was needed, like an emergency room or something like that, that ran nine to five, you know, that's a different story. We do have commercial down there, but it's nine to five commercial. We don't have any all-day commercial, all-night commercial, where trucks are going in the plow in the middle of the night, so the bank can open in the morning, and where dumpsters are emptying the trash every night at two or three o'clock, because that's how they do it in Shrewsbury, all the commercial sites are done at night. So, there's a lot of other things to consider other than, it's just a bank and a piece of commercial property. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just for the, for the record, as I'm looking at the plan, the only drive-through...
Excuse me?
Just for the record, you mentioned that there's drive-through window on the second structure that is not showing on this plan.
All right, it was shown on the one that I got.
So, I just wanted to make sure that...
It was removed after the first version, that's...
Okay, I can only go by what I see.
I have one that shows those, I just want to, you know, make that known.
Also, just, I'm not going to address everything, but the drive-in establishment, so if they were to come back to change that retail to be a drive-in, to Tim's point, they would require a special, another special permit from this planning board and have to come back.
That's correct, yes, and we're aware of that.
That wouldn't be covered by this one, because that's not what they're asking for, just so you know, everyone else knows.
So, I understand your concerns, and we'll take that all into consideration as we continue to think about this site plan. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard?
Good evening, Howard Potash, I'm an attorney at 390 Main Street, Worcester, and I represent Vincenza Arizzi, who lives at 199 Main Street in Shrewsbury. I did draw up, if you wanted, a memorandum of her objections, which I'd like to give you, if I could come forward.
Sure thing.
And I have several copies of them, members who would want them. And I would point out that the prior use of this was a single-family house, and two gentlemen, one of them the owner, used it as an office. They sold chemicals during the week, nine to five, no customers, no signage, no lighting. They parked two cars during the day in the driveway of the single-family house, they rarely have ever had a customer come. It was a commercial use, but a pretty limited commercial use, probably less noise and traffic than someone who occupied a single-family house. I would also point out that as I read the zoning bylaw, table two, it says 15 feet side-back to a residential zone, Ms. Arizzi lives in a residential zone, and it says except 100 feet when abutting a residential district. We would take the position, and we have in the land court and would take it here, that the only way you can waive that or change it is by a variance, not by a special permit, and there probably isn't good grounds for a variance under the case law. But the town specifically enacted 100 feet next to a residential zone, not less than 100 feet, and there's somewhere 67, 68 feet, and, and, and that could be eliminated, the 100 feet could be met if there was only one store instead of two, if the project was smaller. So, I would, I would point that out. I would point out, if you look at a picture that I have of the proposed construction, it doesn't show any signage, it doesn't show any lighted signage or any signage or any lighting, which is very significant. We don't know who the tenants are going to be. We've been told by the proponent that they don't know who's going to rent it, but it looks to me on the picture that it's two, two stores that are consistent with coffee, fast food, convenience store, that's what it's consistent with, people who are going to be open seven days a week and perhaps even 24/7. And there's 48 parking spaces, which is a lot, which is a lot of cars going in and out. Now, as to the little bank, they don't need a special permit. We don't have a problem with the little bank that they're being, that's being built. However, today, no one does much business in a bank, they do the business at the drive-through. The drive-throughs have evolved. Today, the drive-throughs are huge drive-throughs, they have big screens, they have places where you can feed in documents, where you can contact a central office with speakers to talk to a representative, apply for your loans, credit cards, do everything, and basically 90% or more of the people never go in the bank. That's not where the business is conducted. And these drive-throughs are open 24/7 with lights and signage, and people drive in with their radios on, and there's a lot of noise, and a lot of people go at 1, 2, 3 in the morning to take money out of an ATM after they've been out for the evening. They're not limited to just during the day like a bank. My client is right next door, she's been there for many years, she runs a daycare center. She's going to hear all this noise. Now, the traffic, there's already a lot of traffic on Main Street there, and with St. John's, morning, night, UMass Surgical Center, we're not far from 290. All these cars coming in, we don't know, we don't know what the retail people are going to be, but assuming there's going to be stuff connected with food or convenience, there's going to be a lot of people making right turns and left turns, and, and we believe that the traffic is going to back up to 290 both ways, and, and, and at peak times, it's going to be when school is getting out and evening home, people going home, there's going to be considerable traffic. People go to food places all hours of the night and late at night, and that's going to create noise and rubbish and, and high traffic, which is going to diminish my client's peaceful enjoyment of her property, she's been there for years. We don't believe the traffic report, with all respect to Mr. Grania, is adequate, because you can't give a good traffic opinion unless you know who the retail occupants are and what kind of business they're in. They claim a cornerstone, they don't know who they're going to rent to. Well, how can you know what the traffic's going to be? If you rent it to a dress shop, you're not going to have much traffic, or a real estate broker. There's some brokers on that street, or a medical office, or a dental office, so we don't know. It looks to me like two stores that the configuration is for a convenience store, fast food, coffee, pizza, that's, that's, and those are the people who are interested in renting next to a bank. There's met, there's a project in Worcester on Shrewsbury Street with a McDonald's next to a bank, Fidelity Bank, next door is a McDonald's, and, and there's numerous other projects, I believe there's one in Webster, that's what banks do, because they want to get the highest rent, and food places are the ones who pay the highest rent. Now, I would point out that on the special permit, two special permits that I was not involved in yet, but I listened to the hearing, a picture, as Mr. Brolk pointed out, a picture was given of a, of a building, that the ZBA based their approval on a building.
Can I, can I stop you on this, ZBA?
That is not, that does not, that building bears no resemblance to what's being built here today.
Excuse me, sir, the ZBA decision is nothing in our purview, so I understand you giving us background, but we already understand the ZBA.
I, I just, I just, I just point that out, and it's drainage, we believe the drainage is inadequate, because the trees and grass are coming out, there's a lot of water in that area, and we believe that there's going to be more runoff onto the Arizzi property, and in the winter it's going to freeze, and it's going to create a hazard. There's now going to be 58% pavement, and, as opposed to all the grass and trees that were there that absorbed water. So, based upon the memorandum, and my client would substantially oppose the site plan as it's being built, she lives in a residential neighborhood, residential zone, and she has the right, I believe she has the right to rely on that, and there'll be a substantial diminishment of the value of her house and interference with her peaceful enjoyment if this project goes forward as proposed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public? Yes, sir.
You know, because of what they want to do, they're going to change the whole aspect of that street. They're going to change that into a commercial space, a commercial area, and I think that if you are going to allow them to do it, they should be before the town meeting, and they should change the zoning. If that's what you want to put in there, change the zoning, don't stick something in there that doesn't belong there on the, on the neighborhood, I'm sorry, it's just the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to be heard? Mr....
If I could just point out, this is a limited commercial zone. It is zoned correctly, the, the bank isn't allowed use, retail isn't allowed use. Retail isn't allowed use. If the bank had an intention of putting a coffee shop in there, or something along those lines, then we'd be showing you a drive-through on the other side of that building, because those are a necessity, really, for today's coffee shops and Starbucks and stores like that. In order for them to locate in your place, they're going to require you to have a drive-through. It's just a fact of life in the commercial leasing these days. You know, the fact is, there's no need to change the zone. Unfortunately, for some people, they live on the edge of zones. We have a situation here where we have a zone line. This is properly zoned, and it is as a right in terms of a bank. I would suggest again respectfully that the drive-through, you know, you'll have a chance to review the noise and the traffic reports. I respectfully suggest to you that this is of minimal effect whatsoever. I would like to ask Peter Brown if he wants to address a couple of the issues that counsel raised. He is the counsel that has been dealing with Mr. Potash and the Boston litigation, so...
Okay, as long as we're not going to get into a ZBA discussion about what's going on. Okay, thank you, please.
I would very agree. Peter Brown, Brown Legal, and we represent Cornerstone Bank in the ZBA litigation that was filed in 2020 and is still pending in the land court. Just very briefly, you have the traffic report that was submitted in June of 2021 by Cornerstone Bank as part of that litigation, which further confirms the finding of the ZBA of minimal, in fact, no noise impact at all, in particular because of the plan of Cornerstone Bank to put in part of that screening, that six-and-a-half-foot wall that will keep all of the noise within all of the registered levels. You also have the traffic report from McMahon as well, in addition to Mr. Grenier's report. The plaintiffs in that case, Ms. Arizzi and Mr. and Mrs. Brialt, were given the opportunity by September of 2021 to hire and file any expert rebuttal reports that they might have, not even rebuttal reports, because it's their report, to go and show that we're wrong, that there is this major impact on noise, that there is this major impact on traffic, and there has not been. And so I want to make that representation to you, that we have those expert reports, they have been submitted, they have been there for well over a year. The court deadlines have come and gone, the ZBA hearing has come and gone, and there's never been any expert to come in and contradict any of those findings. So I am very glad that the process has still evolved from the date of the ZBA, and in fact, some of the allowances haven't even been fully exercised. This is a development alongside, as Attorney Ricker said, an abutting residential district. Ms. Arizzi has a home there, she uses it for her daycare business as well. But I know Cornerstone Bank wants to be good neighbors. I know they want to be good partners here in the town. And as part of that, I think even in spite of litigation, in spite of two years of delays and COVID and massive increased costs, they're still here looking at this, and how can they make people happy? How can they be reasonable? And how can this project be developed and be a positive force, not just the project, but the property in this community? That's where the litigation stands, and hopefully Cornerstone either will prevail or will reach agreement along the way, and you will see this project in the not-so-distant future.
Good, thank you.
And a McDonald's wouldn't fit there.
Very good. All right, well, it's obvious that we're going to be continuing this hearing, awaiting other information, and for us to digest some of the information that was brought up this evening. I'll entertain a motion to continue.
I move that we continue the proposed bank and retail building site plan approval, Cornerstone Bank, 195 Main Street, to the August 4, 2022, meeting at 7:00 PM.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your input. Our next item of business is...
One second, sir.
Our next item of business is a new public hearing for a proposed warehouse and distribution facility, site plan approval. Shrewsbury Land Property Owner LLC, location is 440 Hartford Turnpike. As a note, Mr. Rota Lakus will be recusing himself from this hearing as well. Mr. Thomas, could you please read the legal notice?
The Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, July 14, 2022, at 7:00 PM, in the Selectment Hearing Room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue, to hear the application of Shrewsbury Land Property Owner LLC, 133 Pearl Street, Boston, Mass. 02110, as required by the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 7F3, for site plan approval by the Planning Board to allow the construction of an industrial building for warehousing and distribution. Proposed development is shown on plans entitled, "Proposed Building 440 Hartford Turnpike", on 12 sheets, dated May 10, 2022. Prepared by Eugene T. Sullivan Incorporated, 230 Lowell Street, Suite 2A, Wilmington, Mass. 01887, stamped by Eugene T. Sullivan, P.E. The subject property is located northeasterly of Stony Hill Road and southerly of Hartford Turnpike, and consists in whole on part of the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 54, Plot 015000. Copy of the application, plans, and reports may be seen in the Office of the Planning and Economic Development Department at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue, Shrewsbury, Mass., and on the Planning Board website.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. If the applicant could please introduce themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mark Donahue from Fletcher-Tilton, on behalf of Shrewsbury Property Owner LLC. With me this evening to present the application for site plan approval is Haley Palazola from GFI Partners, Shrewsbury Land Property Owner and affiliate of GFI Partners; the Eugene Sullivan from Eugene T. Sullivan Incorporated, project engineers; and Courtney Sudak from Tetra Tech with regard to the traffic analysis. Very briefly, just to set the table, the site that you have in question, if you could call it maybe Slide 7, Haley, is approximately a 10-and-a-half-acre site, fronted on the easterly side of Hartford Turnpike, presently unimproved, proximate to the Stony Hill Drive entrance toward that residential development back there. The site is known to permitting authorities, having been Phase 1 of a previously approved comprehensive permit for residential development, the other phase of which is still potential, but this is obviously replacing that effort. The proposed building is a little over 133,000, a single-story warehouse that we'll describe to you in some detail, with loading docks as located. We were before the Zoning Board of Appeal earlier this calendar year, seeking at that time a variance so as to permit loading in the front yard. That variance was granted, and as you know, due to the efforts of the planning department in this board, that zoning was changed later to a special permit, but the variance is valid, so we don't need any further relief from that. Just to refresh your recollection, with regard to GFI and its presence in Shrewsbury, let me turn it over to Haley to briefly remind you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you to the board, Chair, for having us this evening. Again, my name is Haley Palazola of GFI Partners, the affiliate of Shrewsbury Land Property Owner. So if you recall, I'll spare you with too much details about who GFI is. I was in front of you in May, prior to the town meeting, as we presented the proposed bylaw changes to this limited industrial zone. So GFI Partners is a full-service real estate developer based in Boston, Massachusetts. Over the last couple of decades, we've developed about 17 million square feet of commercial space, and actively own about 3 million square feet in Worcester or the surrounding neighborhoods, including 200 acres of land in Frewsbury. So this evening, we're here to present this speculative warehouse, so I thought it may be helpful to take a peek at a couple of other projects that we're actually working with, with Gene, on all these facilities that you see at the top row here are similar in design to what we're proposing at 440 Hartford Turnpike, single-story general warehouse that could attract, you know, types of users that are similar to these, light manufacturing, light assembly. So then, again, this is not your last-mile distribution facility, or, you know, truck terminal of any sort. We see loading on a single side, 36 clear, but when I get to the details, I'll turn that over to Gene Sullivan. The bottom row here is just a couple of examples of other larger facilities that GFI is currently either permitting or actively constructing at this time. So with that, if there's not any other questions about GFI, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Gene Sullivan, the project engineer, to go through the site plan here. Want me to go to the existing conditions, Gene?
Sure, yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and other board members. My name is Gene Sullivan. For the record, I'm the project engineer, and I'll give you a little background on the site and what we're hoping to do with it through this permitting authority. I'll reference the plan by top, bottom, left, and right instead of east, north, and west. It's, as Mark said, it's about a 10-and-a-half-acre site in a limited industrial zoning district. It's at the corner of Stony Hill Road and Hartford Turnpike. From the right-hand side of the property to the left-hand side, there's about 50 or 60 feet of grade, so it's a significant terrain adjustment to deal with. And there are some existing wetlands. In the bottom left-hand corner, there are two different wetland bodies labeled BBW1 or A and B, 1A, 1B. We have applied for a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission and appeared in front of them back on June 21. Really what came out of that hearing was that we're going to have a peer review of our wetland line, but they didn't really have any substantial issues with our plan or methodologies. Haley, if you could go to the next plan, we'll explain what our development's all Different than previous property developments proposed here, we are proposing a single-access off of Hartford Turnpike. It will have a right-turn lane in and right-turn lane out. It's about in the middle of our property line, or our property. Hence, we're, in general, we're taking the hill and knocking down the high part and pushing it in the low part and meeting it in the middle, which is where our driveway's located and makes the most sense in terms of construction methods and costs related to that. So there's a single-access in, there's loading all on the, say, the top side of the building facing Hartford Turnpike, and then on the left-hand side, we have 100-car passenger vehicles for the office and warehouse workers. Additionally, we have full circulation around the building with a fire access lane coming on the left or the right side around back and circulating all the way around. That would be a grass-paved system. I don't know if you're familiar with that or not, but it's not pavement, it's a membrane that puts down with stones and they grass over the top of it, so it does leach in the ground. It's porous material that is suitable to handle fire equipment. We use that in a lot of different communities. We have planned for, in that purple area, small office space. We tend to see about 5,000 square feet of office space for, you know, to support shipping or small office areas to run their business operations. It's pretty typical of what we're finding in these businesses. Probably go next to the drainage and utilities plan. That's okay, that's fine. So what we've done on this property, there's quite a few retaining walls, I should have pointed that out as well. They're kind of following the fire lane, because we are down in the hole. On one side, we're building up, and we're below the walls, and on the other side, we're above the wall, and it's meeting the grade over by the wetlands, because they're actually down below our main parking lot. But what we've done is had a series of, this building will have a slope heading towards Hartford Turnpike and towards the rear, so a ridge down the middle. So we have a collection system of roof drains and downspouts around the building, leading over to a detention or an infiltration basin on the left-hand side there. We've also got catch basins throughout the yard that will collect runoff, deep-some catch basins, a water quality unit, and then discharge into the infiltration basin as well. We've been able to design the basin to infiltrate, but also attenuate root rates and flows so that everything's less than what it is currently, and treated properly in accordance with Mass DP standards, stormwater standards. One other thing of note is that we actually have designed the passenger vehicle area, which is the 100 spaces, I should have shown you on the last graphic, but that's a porous pavement section, as opposed to standard pavement. We have heavy-duty pavement for the loading dock, but this is a pavement that will allow water to infiltrate through it, and it has a deeper section of stone, washed stone, sands, and things like that to allow that water to infiltrate directly into the ground, which will put less of a burn in on our drainage systems. We've had a lot of luck with those. We do them in a lot of other communities to have some low-impact development as far as that goes, so. Water and sewer are available to the site. For now, the sewer is going to be leaving the bottom left-hand corner and heading out into Stony Hill Road, and water comes in along Hartford Turnpike that we'll use for our domestic water services and our fire protection systems. We've also submitted landscaping plans and site lighting plans with full cutoff fixtures and so forth, if you have any questions relative to that. So that's really all I have. Ready to entertain questions or pass it over to Courtney?
If I could, Gene, just really quick, I was just going to throw the 3D renderings up, just because I don't think the board has seen these before. You can kind of see your retaining walls better in this picture.
Yeah, so the driveways on the left-hand side, you'll be entering in, you can see the loading docks, you know, facing the street over there, and as you go, say, upper-left-hand corner, Haley, you're going around there with the fire accesses, you can see the retaining walls up above our parking lot, and as you come around the corner, you can barely see it sticking out, but it's still 30 feet high, but that's just kind of how we met the grade in the middle.
And how tall is the retaining wall at the highest point?
It's probably 25 feet or so over on that back lower side where we're adjacent to the wetlands. Closer to the back and the sides where the residences are, it's more in the 17-foot number, somewhere like that. But it actually goes up and down, too. As you're coming around the corner, that's the highest point there, and then when you get behind the building, it actually goes to nothing and then starts transferring down into below, so. We've also provided screening, fencing, and plantings along the, what is kind of the behind the building, I guess, from Hartford Turnpike, with our residential neighbors back there.
That's just another view of the office entrance.
Yep.
Great, I'll turn it over to Courtney now.
For the record, Courtney Sudak with Tetra Tech, we're the traffic consultants for the project. I have a slide here, if anyone's even a little more familiar. So we met with DOT and staff from the town at a scoping session in December to go over what DOT and the town planner would like to see for the traffic study, since this was already reviewed for a higher traffic generator back in 2016. So what we were scoped for was the two intersections that you see here, the two Stony Hill Road intersections along Route 20, as well as the site driveway. Through discussions with DOT about the site access, DOT was adamant that right-in, right-out only on Route 20 was the access that they would likely approve. So the applicant has restricted access, even though they did want full access. It is now right-in, right-out only, no access on Stony Hill Road. If you recall from the Point at Hills Farm project that was previously approved, there was an emergency access-only driveway on Stony Hill Road. So this is just purely access on Route 20. Route 20 is Mass. DOT jurisdiction all the way through the study area, and we also looked at crash history. We went as far back as three years before the pandemic began, since there wasn't as much traffic in the last couple of years, to make sure that we had a good basis for the crash analysis, and the crash rates were significantly below the Mass. DOT statewide and district-wide averages at both intersections and along the roadway segment between the two intersections for the five years of crash data that we analyzed. So if you go to the next slide. So unfortunately, because of the pandemic, it really didn't make sense to collect new traffic data. So we discussed this at length with DOT, and they were very comfortable with us using the data that we collected back in 2014 for the Point at Hills Farm project, adding in some developments that, or considering potential developments that had been constructed since then. then, as well as using a background growth rate to estimate from 2014 up to 2021. And then we added in several background development projects that are planned or approved or under construction based on consultation with the town planner to generate out seven years in the future. So first, the existing traffic volumes are shown here, and you can see that we only looked at AM and PM because those are the typical peak hours looked at for warehouse development. And then if you go to the next slide, Haley. So we projected out seven years in the future with numerous background projects, and then we took a look at this specific project. So as Haley mentioned, as of now, this project is anticipated to be a typical warehouse design. So we used industry-standard trip rates published by ITE for the approximately one-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand square feet of space. The newer trip generation rates published by ITE last year now allow us to separate out the heavy-vehicle traffic for warehouse use. Before, it used to just be that you could only get the total traffic, so that's convenient. So you can see during the peak hours, there's only a nominal amount of actual, you know, tractor-trailers or single-unit vehicles. In total, it's about one additional vehicle every two or three to four minutes. So if you go to the next slide. So we wanted to compare this to what was previously proposed as part of the Point at Hills Farm development back in 2015, which you may recall is one-hundred-and-eighty multifamily units at that time. The project was ultimately approved for one-hundred-and-fifty-six multifamily units, and that generated more than an additional vehicle trip per minute. When you compare that to what the applicant is currently proposing, there is a significant decrease in peak hour trips, but particularly the weekday daily trips. You can see that gets reduced by almost a thousand vehicles per day. So definitely a significantly less traffic impacts than what was previously approved by the board. So go to the next slide. Obviously, with this being a right-in, right-out driveway, the trip distribution is really simple. You know, a hundred percent of the traffic will have to enter from Route 20 from the west, and they'll have to exit to the east. Next slide, please. When you apply that to the trip generation, this slide provides you what those actual numbers would be. So you can see there's only a handful of trips going past the Stony Hill Road driveways during the peak hours, and then it'd be even less during the off-peak hours. Next slide, please. And then for reference, these are the build traffic volumes. When you add the future projections out to 2029 with all of the background development projects that we accounted for, as well as the general background growth rate and our project, that gives you the build. Next slide, please. So then DOT did want us to update the capacity analyses at the study intersections. Even though it's significantly less traffic, they just wanted us to document it. So this is just a table summarizing the weekday morning peak hour results for the existing no-build, which is the future year without the warehouse project, and then the future build, which is with the project. And Haley, if you can zoom in a little bit. So you can see that the impact due to the project is negligible. There's very little change in the volume-to-capacity ratio going from no-build to build at Stony Hill Road West. And then at Stony Hill Road East, if you scroll down a little bit, you can see that that intersection operates at level of service, see, or better. And then we also looked at the PM peak hour. If you go to the next slide. And the same thing, that the impacts from the project are negligible, hardly any change to the volume-to-capacity ratio. And as I mentioned before, because under this application, there'll be only one driveway, and it'll be right-in, right-out on Route 20 and no traffic on Stony Hill Road, we're not adding to that side-street delay. Next slide, please. And to make sure that the site driveway follows ASHTO criteria for site distance, ASHTO is the industry standard, we looked at the design speed, which is forty-five miles per hour, and we also looked at the observed eighty-fifth percentile travel speeds back from when we collected ATR data as part of the Point at Hills Farm project. You can see that the eighty-fifth percentile travel speed is fifty-five. The posted speed limit used to be higher. In the last few years, DOT reduced it to forty-five, which should make things safer than they were before, but there's plenty of site distance, you know, it's more than six hundred feet in each direction. So right now, we are having DOT review the driveway location, so there may be some minor slight modifications, you know, based on some minor comments they might have, and Gene will update the plans accordingly. But for right now, we've, you know, we've given them what the big ask, which was the driveway restriction. Can I answer questions, or Haley, if you want to wrap it up?
I think we're already.
Yeah, that's it for the presentation.
So we're obviously glad to answer any questions. We will be asking to continue so we can make some modifications based upon the July first comments received from the planning staff and the July sixth comments from Graves. As Gene indicated, we're going to the Conservation Commission, so we'd like an opportunity to update all of that and bring it back to you ultimately, but we'd like to answer any questions this evening in any event.
Okay. Mr. Jerry.
First, I guess, a question, because I'm not familiar with this grass paving system, but can that be plowed for snow?
Yes.
And is your intention, obviously, to keep that clear?
It has to stay clear, absolutely.
Right. And I guess, just following on on that, I'm just a little, I guess, concerned about where the snow storage is on site, given the volume that you're going to be plowing here. So I assume the bulk of it's going to be trucked?
There'll be, a lot of it's going to be towards the front, along our frontage, and whatever remains over that will have to be trucked.
I mean, I think the right turn only mitigates some of that, but.
Yep.
Okay. That was my only comment.
Mr. Thomas?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just have a comment that I think it's a much better use for what was proposed there before.
That's a low bar.
I think this fits a little better. I agree with Mr. Jerry about the snow storage, but other than that, I'm comfortable with it with everything else right now. We have to see what Conservation says, obviously, but I don't have any further questions or comments.
We did get three or four memos between engineering, the town planner, Graves. We had a meeting with Conservation, and there really isn't anything in there that we're concerned about. As a matter of fact, I responded to ninety percent of them already.
Okay.
So just to give you a little comfort with that, it's.
Thank you.
I got just a couple of questions. So you mentioned that the, where the employee parking is, not necessarily the hard pavement area, that is a design for water to flow through.
Correct.
You probably saw in Graves Engineering's comments the fact that there's a water issue on Stony Hill, and that there's probably going to be some improvements that are going to need to happen around there. Is that something that you're amenable to?
Yeah, that's, that's kind of the only loose end we have in the comments. You see that in a couple of different memos, the town engineers as well. I have some ideas on how to do it. I saw what they did before. I mean, the cover under the road's great, but I have a better, I think I have a better idea on how to capture it. And really, our property's going to do ninety percent of the work. Our slope across is what's causing a lot of the problem in the runoff, right? Well, all that's going to be contained by our development. It'll be routed into the pond, so we're talking a very small amount of area that can contribute towards that going forward, but it's still going to slope on that side along the road, and we'll handle that with him.
Okay, and the only other comment I have, and I didn't have a lot of time to really drill into these plans, have only been around for the last couple of days. The retaining wall, is this a budding residential area, or what, where, on that tall part of the retaining wall, what is, what is?
So the tall part on the, if you're looking on the plan on the right-hand side, that's next to the freight company, right? That's the tall part. As you go to the, along the back here, that is the, abutting the residential, so we're actually below them.
Okay.
So that wall's in the middle, it's kind of zero, like I said, and it's going up that way or to about fifteen feet out the right-hand, bottom right-hand corner, and by the time you get to the bottom left-hand corner, we're up above and it drops off down in there. So it's only retaining wall on the backside for about half, but we did put a fence along the whole rear property line.
My only concern is we've been experiencing issues with retaining walls in the, in the community for the last couple of years, and I'm not sure if this one's going to need to have a structural engineer.
They were over four feet. They're required to be designed by a structural engineer, by code.
So this, I'll remind the board that this board's been asking every project with said retaining walls for those details to be submitted now for geotechnical peer review. So for consistency's sake, I think I recommend to this board that they request the same detailed plans.
Up front, okay.
And we'll send them out to our geotechnical peer reviewer, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Other than that, I agree with Mr. Thomas, it's definitely much better. I mean, there's only one other comment I have, is you have some, some of the docks or entrances are very close to where the entrance and exit is, so for traffic flow there with trucks is.
So we've done auto turn, I've done auto turn in there. That's a hundred-and-fifty feet.
Could you, I know we've done it with fire trucks.
Yep.
Could you have something provided to us to show that as well, please?
Yep, I've already done it, so it's happy to pass it along.
And as far as that grass emergency exit area, I did not get a chance to read the fire department. The fire department was okay with that?
They asked me to prove to them that it's acceptable as a method of support, but that's not a problem.
Okay, so you'll provide?
Yep, we'll provide a cut sheet and show them all that.
Okay, very good. Other than that, does anybody else have any questions?
Nope.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard? Not seeing any hands raised. It's obvious that we have to continue this hearing, so entertain a motion to continue the hearing.
May I suggest that, to give us the time and also finish with ConCon, that we actually go to your September meeting?
Sure.
What's the date for September?
September first is supposed to.
Is it the first?
Yep.
It's the first. Yes, turning it down here is correct, it's September first.
I move that we continue the proposed warehouse and distribution facility, site plan approval, Shrewsbury Land Property Owner LLC, new public hearing to our September first, 2022 meeting at 7:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next public hearing is for a proposed gas station, car wash, convenience store, and bank site plan approval and special permit. It's a new public hearing for location 193 Hartford Turnpike. Again, Mr. Roto Lakis will be recusing himself from this hearing as well. Mr. Thomas, could you please read the public notice?
Shrewsbury Planning Board, as a special permit granting authority, will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, July fourteenth, 2022, 7:00 PM, in a selectman's hearing room at the Richard D. County Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue, here the application of Prociante Group LLC, 1140 Reservoir Avenue, Cranston, Rhode Island, 02920, as required by the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, Section 7 F3 and Section 6, Table 1, for site plan approval and special permit by the planning board to allow for the construction of a car wash, gas station, convenience store, and bank with a drive-in service. The proposed development is shown on plans entitled, "Proposed Site Plan Documents on Twenty-Three Sheets, Dated April 29th, 2022, Revised on May 31st, 2022, and on May 31st, 2022, Prepared by Bowler Engineering, 352 Turnpike Road, South Brom, Mass. 01772." The subject property is located easterly of Lake Street and northerly of Hartford Turnpike and consists in whole or in part of the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 52, Plot 125000. Copy of the application, plans, and reports may be seen in the Office of the Planning and Economic Development Department at the Richard D. County Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Avenue, Shrewsbury, Mass., and on the Planning Board website.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. I did receive a letter asking for a continuation of this hearing until the September first, 2022 planning board meeting.
September first or August fourth?
This one says to September first.
As well, okay.
Yes. If anyone doesn't have any objections to that, I'll entertain a motion to just continue the hearing.
Uh.
Any, have any questions or comments?
I move that we continue the proposed gas station, car wash, convenience store, and bank site plan approval and special permit, Prociante Group LLC, new public hearing at 193 Hartford Turnpike, to our September first, 2022, meeting at 7:00 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Our next public hearing is a continued public hearing for Falcon Farms, nine-lot subdivisions, definitive subdivision, location 581, 583, 587, South Street, and is the applicant present?
Believe it or not, Mr. Roto Lakis.
Oh, Mr. Roto Lakis can sit in on this one. He's here.
I am here. He's staying here. Waiting for you guys.
See, he's been dragging his feet.
By the way, you're vice chair for this year, too, just so you know.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Imad Zurein from Deval Zurein, civil engineer, with me Rashid Sheikh, the applicant. Just give you an update where we are at this point. We just, we've, the last conservation hearing, we've received the order of condition, I think on the twenty-first was that hearing. As far as the reviews, there was the last one, minor comment from Graves, which is adding an invert to the plan, and we think we could just add that to the, to the milars at the end, you know, just like one invert for a drain pipe. So the only really outstanding issue was the GZA review of the retaining wall, which we've submitted, about two weeks ago, we submitted the plans of the design for the segmental walls, and we've received the comments, I believe, yesterday. Since then, we've gave, we're giving to the engineer, and we've got response back. We forward to Bernie. We think they're all pretty much, they were asking was just additional information. So other than that, I think we, you know, we hope we could close the, close the meeting and, you know, maybe condition, you know, satisfying GZA with the, with the requested information and adding the invert to the plan on, for Graves.
There you go.
That's all we are.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the board at this time? Mr. Jerry?
I have none.
Mr. Roto Lakis?
Did we get the GZA report?
So, Mr. Chairman, I received it at 4:30 today, so it's on the Google Drive, it's been sent to GZA already for their final comment back, so I literally just received it. I don't know, I don't even think I had a chance to print it for you.
Oh, wasn't it?
No, sorry, just like I said, I just received it at the end of the day, so we'll still get one more comment back, this board from GZA reviewing the applicant's response.
You know, I was ready to kind of close this.
Yeah, we can, we can condition it with.
It's up to the board's comfort level what you want to do.
I guess the only issue is, like, I think I said, said from the get-go is that if we're going to end up accepting this crossing as part of a subdivision, I want to make sure GZA is fine with it, whoever is fine with it. That's my concern, that's my only concern.
I think that's a reasonable rationale. It's the board's decision to make, how, their comfort level. I mean, it's three weeks away because we've had this late meeting, it's not a full month, it's just three weeks to the next meeting, and we'll have, like I said, I sent it to GZA this evening, we should have it tomorrow. I understand, so.
I don't want to hold up the applicant.
I know, yeah.
But I understand we, the applicant, I'm not going to say held us up, but we continued it, but conceptually, I don't have a problem with anything that the applicant has done, but I just want to make sure that we're not approving something that ultimately comes back to us because the town or GZA says, we get the road acceptance, that we're not comfortable with the crossing that the applicant has designed or constructed. That's my only issue.
Mr. Chairman, may I? For the record, Rashid Sheikh, trustee, Falcon Farms. So just want to clarify that basically we were asked to get this design, detailed design from the structural engineer, which we did, and that engineer is very familiar with the Town of Shrewsbury, has done a lot of work, Mr. Richard Bochanel. So anyway, he submitted about two weeks ago, we got the feedback from GZA yesterday, which was actually honestly asking more information in terms of give a little more detail, sketch of the fence, something. Something very rudimentary, which, but there were a lot of them. So we actually, and, and also ask, you know, do this and do that. So we, actually, our engineer right away turned, I mean, again, it was only one day, and he, he turned back right away because he knew that we are meeting today. And then we didn't see that anything substantial, so we kind of accepted all what GZA said. And, and we are still saying that if you want to condition it that, you know, either permit or acceptance of road is, uh, conditioned to, you know, satisfactory closing with the GZA, we, we are absolutely fine with it.
I'm not sure you want that, to be honest with you. If I was the applicant, I, I don't think that I would want that. I, I would think I would want some finality with respect to the crossing design. It's up to you. You know, I, I suppose I can go with it, but I don't think I would want that.
I think they are not asking for any color, uh, you know, kind of issues. This is more, because I, I read the comments and they were actually, they, they put it right on the sketch. They didn't even write on the letter. It wasn't any substantial. They were asking, give more detail here, give more detail here, do this and do that, and he did all that. I was, I, I'm uncomfortable with it.
Remember, you're gonna have to sell the houses. And if, if someone raises the issue and, and you're gonna build the houses before the, the road is accepted, I, I, you know, I, I guess I can live with it, but it'd be something that I'm not sure I'd be entirely comfortable with.
Well, we understand, but it's, it's a ten to twelve foot high wall and walls are built.
I haven't seen, I haven't seen the dis, I haven't seen the comments.
No, I understand, I understand.
So I'm kind of shooting, I'm, I'm kind of shooting in the blind.
What I'm trying to say is, we, we're willing to take the risk because it's not, uh, what, what we proposing here is not, is, is built every day. You know, they, they build walls every day and it's not a high wall. It's ten to twelve foot high. So we're willing to accept the risk to go, you know, until GZA is satisfied, you know, to set a condition until GZA is satisfied with the design. Uh, it's not a, it's not a difficult design. It's, it's a simple design.
I, I suppose that in the decision, it would say that it's understood that, uh,
pulling it up.
that road acceptance won't be, road, I mean, that, uh, it's understood that the, or the applicant understands that road acceptance, uh, won't be forthcoming until GZA approves the.
Why don't we just put the town shall not accept the road as a public way um, until such time as GZA has.
GZA and.
Or the peer, I'll just say, let's say.
Peer reviewer in the engineering department, because they're one of the same.
Yeah, oh, I, I understand.
Somebody at the end, after it's constructed, somebody's gonna sign off on it. A professional engineer will sign off.
It could be three years from now. That's what I'm saying.
I understand, I understand. But we're trying to move forward and, you know.
I, I, I can appreciate that and I know it's a long road and I'm not trying to hold you up.
I understand.
But, and I'm sorry that GZA didn't get the, you know, response yesterday or the day before, but have you ordered the bridge? No.
Things in work. Things in work.
Okay.
Anything else, Steve?
No, I think I'm good.
I'm good.
I'm good as well. Um, I, I echo Mr. Roto Lakis' concerns about not having a clean bill of health from GZA on this, but if you're amenable to having that as part of the condition, I think we can word it such that the town is still protected and.
Yes.
Your points, uh, we're not gonna, the, the town will not accept the road until the GZA is completely satisfied.
We're not gonna, I know I'm not gonna, as a board member, suggest that we recommend acceptance to town meeting.
Until such time.
Until such time as GZA finds.
I would use the peer review. The peer is the right word.
Oh, peer review.
Peer review, huh, whatever. Here or the town, uh, town engineering department, doesn't matter. Doesn't matter.
Yeah.
It's a political decision. Keep in mind when you're going before town meeting, it's a political decision. It could be for any reason that people don't like acceptance of the road. So I'm trying to eliminate those issues for you, Rashid, in advance.
No, I appreciate it. No, you did. But we believe we're gonna resolve this issue in a week.
Okay.
I've seen it.
I'm not gonna say I've heard that before, but.
Well, I paid the money. I want to close it.
Not with this engineer.
They are expensive and I don't want to keep it open.
But you get what you pay for in this one. Rashid, I just tell you, with engineers or lawyers, I think this engineer has served you well, so.
Okay, there's no other questions or comments from the board this.
I have one comment, Mr. Chairman. So, um, it was brought to my attention today looking at the lotting plan. Um, and this was changed from the prior application is, uh, uh, if you take a look at where it's called lot nine on the plan, is actually an existing lot and that was called out the last time in the twenty twenty-one plan. So there's only nine lots being proposed. What is now listed as six oh one, I'm sorry, I can't see. I printed it out and I couldn't find my printout. Uh, six, lot six oh one R is actually, should be lot eight. Lot eight should be lot nine and then lot nine should be, it's not part of this subdivision because it was already in existence.
It's an A N R.
It was created by an A N R in two thousand and fifteen, so well predates this. So the other one, the one called lot six oh one R should be eight. And I, this is important because if you go to lot ten, it's automatically two affordable housing units that are due inclusionary housing. We had discussed this and I went back fourteen months ago to my old, well, I didn't go back in time. I went back through my files to stuff from fourteen months ago and looked at our correspondence and we had discussed this previously. So it's important that that lot, remember that was not part, we had discussed this.
That's not part of it.
Correct. So, but it's called lot nine currently on the plan. So I'm gonna ask, as a condition, I'm just letting you know, if the board's comfortable with this, I'd recommend a condition that says the lotting order needs to be redone. I'm gonna ask for the final addresses anyways, but the lotting order needs to be redone. So it's still nine, but lot nine is actually changed to five seven seven South Street. Does that make sense to everyone? Because that was accidentally, or I should say erroneously included as one of the lots in the subdivision, but it already exists. It was created through an A N R subdivision seven years ago.
So that would be.
It exists independently of this. It doesn't need the frontage. It was already created. So it doesn't need to be there. So that's just.
But if it's held in common ownership, does it trigger the affordable bylaw?
No, because it predates, it's, well, first of all, even if it did, it's past the two-year, uh, period. We have that two-year period. So once you've created those lots, you get a clean slate after two years. You can create more after that.
I, I think it's a confusion. I'm sorry. We are all confused. We, we have nine lot plan. There is, there is a separate six oh one R, which is the A N R, separate, that, that is a sep, that is nothing to do with this, uh, subdivision. And it's not fed by this road.
It was submitted to conservation as part of the subdivision review.
So what do we?
And the, one second, and the drainage plan for this subdivision is on that lot. So it necessarily needs to be included as lot nine. Either way, it'll just be one, whether you include it or not, but it needs to be included as this subdivision, as lot eight. Because it was reviewed by conservation as such. It's been shown on this plan and it was created through this plan. Lot nine was already in existence. We can talk about it offline more if you want, but that lot nine, this is to your benefit, should be five seven seven South Street.
So five seven seven South Street was always a five seven seven South Street.
And that's what I'm agreeing with. That's why it shouldn't be lot nine. It was already there.
I think the lot nine is opposite of the road. That's.
Then we're gonna have lot ten and you owe us two.
No, hang on. I think.
I mean, this is fine.
You'll go with that?
Against your.
No, I'm not, I'm not.
We'll accept it.
No, I appreciate it.
I'm arguing in your favor.
No, no, you are, but I just want to clarify. I think there is a confusion here. So if I.
But carry on.
Maybe, maybe, maybe I'm confused.
This is existing lot. So there is nine lot.
Okay, so are, are you saying the lot nine is?
Five seventy-seven.
No, it's not five.
That's what he's saying. Five seventy-seven South Street.
I, I just want to understand.
I just looked it up on the G I S. Lot nine is five seven seven South Street.
Okay.
So just like you have across the street, you have NF, you have the name of the purse and the address. I would do the same for this lot.
Mm-hmm.
And then just where it says six oh one R lot, just change it to lot nine, or lot eight, and then lot eight becomes lot nine. Done.
Okay, I, honestly, I'm not, I'm a little confused in here, but I do know that the six oh one R was like the, it, it is the A N R. It is not part of the subdivision, but what we did when, when we were applying for conservation, when we had to do that conservation as well.
Right.
So we lumped it together as a, uh, anyway, I don't know.
So it was reviewed, it was reviewed in its entirety by Graves and Conservation, including the great drainage on six oh one R is part of the subdivision.
The perimeter is.
Necessarily has to be part of it, yeah.
The perimeter that was submitted is part of the subdivision.
So this has to be part of it. And that lot was shown too on, uh, I can't remember what sheet it is, where the house is gonna be and everything. So all the details have been submitted.
So, but you know this better than I, I, I don't mean to, I, I'm just trying to understand. As long as, as long as, I don't mind changing the numbers. As long as, you know, if we exclude that old lot which was five seventy-seven South Street.
Correct.
Then we are okay.
That's it. Nothing else is.
I just.
Engineering-wise technically, but we need that to change because we, otherwise you go up to ten.
But because, because technically now I have ten houses to build because there are nine lot in subdivision and one outside of subdivision.
Mm-hmm.
So I just, I don't want to, I don't know.
You don't.
Okay.
You have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven around. Eight would be the six oh one R and nine would be what is lot eight today and then lot nine is not part of it.
Five seventy-seven. Okay.
Do we need a new plan?
The lot numbers need to change. Otherwise, we have ten lots, which is.
Yeah, I think, I think it needs to be continued until, yes, I think this needs to be continued until that is.
And then GZA can work its way out.
Right.
Everything's done. We don't need confusing conditions or anything. And we can talk offline.
Correct. Because this is going into.
I don't want to.
It sounds like it's, it's a clerical situation, but it sounds like you need to sit down and really discuss this out, so.
We have a draft decision in front of us that references a plan with meets and bounds and everything else. How are we gonna approve that?
That's still correct. It's just the plan needs to represent that.
Well, he's not in position to do that.
Right.
Unless he's willing to build two affordable houses today, I'd approve it right now.
So, I mean, can I, can I approach you just to clarify our?
Let's clarify offline.
Right.
I think the board has enough business.
Okay. Right. So, yeah, I, I agree. I think this, to your point, Steve, it, it.
It's getting muddied.
Can get muddy and.
It's not a terminal error. It's just something that needs to be corrected and clarified.
Fix it by the next meeting.
I, I understand. It's gonna be a couple more weeks.
GZA will have fixed everything and you guys will be good, you know?
Yeah, I think we'll have an offline discussion. I'm a little confused about the lot.
Yep.
Lots is very important because.
Unless you want to build two affordable houses, I'm good with that.
That's the next one. Um, all right. So continue. Is that the?
Well, I, I'm gonna open it up to the.
Oh, yes, of course.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that wishes to be heard? Yes. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Franz Zaretti, six twenty-five South Street. I'm a butter for the property. Not to add more confusion, but six oh one R, I have an issue with that. I don't believe it was an A N R lot. It was part of the subdivision. And I have an easement on that lot. I know that easements are civil issues. But, um, the easement I have across that lot, uh, was put there when I had the original property. And the house that was on that lot was formerly called lot thirteen in my A N R plan. The house was approximately four hundred feet away from the easement that connects my property to my other property. The proposal now on lot six oh one R, which is now lot eight or nine, whatever you're gonna call it, I have an exhibit here. The, um, easement that I have is about three feet from the front of the foundation of the house. So it went from four hundred feet to three feet. And the easement granted in registry deeds book five nine two three eight, page three oh three, states that I have rights across fifteen-foot wide easement on foot and with vehicles, including without limitation, with animals and farm equipment for access and egress for parcel A and other lot ten, other property I own. So also, the easement, uh, has a surface that it has to be either gravel, stone, stone dust, or similar materials, but not asphalt. So I have an exhibit here showing that. I'll give it to the board. But what I'm getting at is that I have an easement there that I use equipment, bulldozers, tractors, farm equipment that traverses from my house to my barn. And it's now two, three feet from the front door of the house. So in the back of the house, there's a thirty-foot buffer zone of a no-build area, levied by Conservation Commission. And to the left of the house is the drainage system easement where the detention ponds are. So if you look at where the house is now, it's squashed between three different areas. And I don't know how the people who buy this house is gonna be able to put up with the fact that there's an easement and equipment right in their front door. I don't even know if the steps can be built on the house in order to be encroaching on the easement. Also, there's a septic tank put under the easement, which it has to be an H twenty loading if they do put the house there because it'll collapse when the equipment drives over there. So I just want to go on record now. It may be a civil matter later, but I'm trying to avoid that now because of the proximity where the house is. And if someone buys this under disclosure, that they're gonna be realizing that there is an easement there and there's gonna be equipment running at seven o'clock in the morning, whatever the case may be. I just want to put it on record now and show you this exhibit and I give it to the board, that I got an issue with that. And I don't want to have litigation later. I'm just trying to work this out now. I'm not against the project. I'm not for the project. I'm neutral. So I'm not a, a person that's against the project. But I have an issue on this particular lot that we're calling an A N R lot. It's part of the property, whatever it is. The easement now is in jeopardy of having issues later on down the road. When I originally granted it, the house was four hundred feet away.
I'd like to give the board this. Um, just for my curiosity, this, this hearing's been, now this is a new hearing, but this project has been in front of us for close to two years at this point. Uh, this is the first time it's been brought to our attention. So is there a reason?
This is the first time I saw that particular plan with that lot and that house where it's located. I think in previous plans, it was not on it.
Is this lot nine?
Yeah, Mr. Rashid.
Six oh one R, I believe, or whatever the number is.
I'm looking at, Randy, I'm looking at a, a lotting plan of.
This used to call parcel A, Mr. Chair?
It's on she, it's on sheet number ten.
There's a diagram on the left-hand side showing the close-up of the.
This creating a utility plan? It's sheet number ten.
Yeah, it's on the left-hand side where you can see it says South Street and it shows one unit. Like a, yep.
Where's the easement?
It shows up earlier. I think on sheets.
This is the easement right here, isn't it?
The easement's on the plan. It's in very light, light print.
It is, as Mr.
Detail, okay.
I mean, I would say to the board that as Mr. Zaretti made quite clear already, as he knows, is this is a private civil matter. And, I mean, you can bring it to the board's attention and make a public statement, but it's between him and or him and the applicant really where that house is located.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It is a civil matter and honestly, um, it's, 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 it's amazing that, uh, when I bought the land from Mr. Zaretti, and again, this is a civil matter. I don't think it really relates to you, but since he brought it up and when he sold me the land, he specifically said that he will move the, you know, easement when I make the lotting plan because I told them what I'm gonna be doing. There are a lot more to it, um, you know, and, and I just, I, I, it's amazing that he knows it for years and he's just bringing it up today. Uh, and this is, this discussion is really not even, and again, that's the reason I'm continuing and I'll discuss that. That is a separate parcel, which was a parcel A, and now it's six oh one R, which is the A N R. In my understanding, that that's not part of the subdivision. But anyway, I think that's what we'll do. We'll offline discuss and clarify.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Continuing any?
We're continuing anyway. Is anyone else in the audience wish to be heard? Okay, that will take a motion to continue the public hearing.
I move that we continue the discussion on the Falcon Farms definitive subdivision plan until, was it August third?
Fourth.
Fourth.
Thursday, August fourth until seven P M.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have another one?
Yes. So the next one, um, Mr. Iliadi will be sitting in on this. So this is a new public hearing for Falcon Farms, nine lot subdivision, special permit, inclusionary housing fee in lieu.
I was gonna consider this until he's reconciled the ten or nine lots.
Well, what we can do is we can open the public hearing and continue it and have a decision or have a discussion about it.
If he doesn't.
When we have more clarity.
He's gonna build us two.
Well, no, I'm, I'm convinced it's nine lots. He's just got the wrong lots.
And same here.
Fair enough. If you're not comfortable, then.
Well, I, I, I agree. I mean, we're, we're gonna continue the other one anyways. It's.
Yeah.
I think we can, we can open the meeting and then we can just continue it. Um, so.
I would, I would fix it.
So this is for Falcon Farms, nine lot subdivision, special. So this is for Falcon Farms, nine-lot subdivision, special permit, inclusionary housing fee in lieu. Seven Shelty, uh, Cheryl Realty Trust. New public hearing for location five eighty-one, five eighty-three, and five eighty-seven South Street. Mr. Thomas, could you please read the public hearing?
Shoesbury Planning Board, as a special permit granting authority, will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, July fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, at seven P. M. in the Selectman's Hearing Room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, one hundred Maple Avenue, to hear the application of Seven Cheryl Realty Trust, twenty-four Cheryl Drive, Shoesbury, Mass. oh one five four five, as required by the Town of Shoesbury zoning bylaw, section seven, K six, A three, for a special permit to allow for a fee in lieu of providing one onsite inclusionary housing unit. Proposed development is shown on plans entitled definitive subdivision Falcon Farm South Street dated January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, and revised on May second, twenty twenty-two, in ten sheets prepared by D. Velis Zrain Incorporated, P. O. Box three oh seven, Foxborough, Mass. zero two, zero three five, sent by Imad A. Zrain, P. E., and Michael A. Puzitizi, P. L. S. The property is located southerly of Brook Street and northerly of South Street and consists in whole or in part of Shoesbury Assessor's Tax Plate forty-three, plot zero two one zero zero three, tax plate, tax plate forty-three, plot zero two one zero zero nine, tax plate forty-three, plot zero two one zero zero five, tax plate forty-three, zero two one zero zero four. Copy of the application and plans may be seen in the office of planning of the, in the office of the Planning and Economic Development Department at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, one hundred Maple Avenue, Shoesbury, Mass., and on the Planning Board website.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. As was mentioned, where we have to continue the other hearing, rather than getting to this, let's get some clarity on what the number may be, any, in any event. And I think we can just have a discussion about this at our next meeting. So unless you have anything that you would like to add, I, I entertain a motion to continue this public hearing.
I, I, I particularly don't, other than, you know, just a strategic direction that this is the direction we are going in, that we were, you know, paying fee in lieu of the, the lot.
Separate issue as to how many lots you have to build or what the number would be.
Right. Okay. I mean, if you feel comfortable, that's fine with me. But I, I'm talking about the strategic discussion, but if you think it's better, there is no doubt it's nine lot. Okay, it's not that lot. Uh, it's just, I wanna clar, clarify.
It was ten, though.
I'm sorry?
It would show.
No, there, there is a separate parcel and, and there is a confusion. We, we need to clarify the confusion.
So that's why we need to continue this until the next time.
Sure.
Okay with that?
Sure.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, then I, I would, as the applicant has requested, I would grant the applicant's continuance on the special permit request relative to the fee in lieu of building the affordable unit.
Do I have a?
It's potentially.
To August.
To August third, Thursday, August third, fourth.
Fourth.
Excuse me, Thursday, August fourth at seven P. M.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
See you next month.
Thank you.
Okay, our next public hearing is another new public hearing. This is for the police station driveway alteration, site plan modification, Town of Shoesbury, location one hundred Maple Avenue. Mr. Thomas, please read the public notice.
The Shoesbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, July fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, at seven P. M. in the Selectman's Hearing Room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, one hundred Maple Avenue, to hear the application of the Town of Shoesbury, one hundred Maple Avenue, Shoesbury, Mass. oh one five four five. For site plan modification by the Planning Board as required by the Town of Shoesbury zoning bylaw, section seven F three, to allow for the construction of an access driveway. Proposed development is shown on plans entitled alternate drive plans in three sheets dated August nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, and revised on May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, prepared by Fuss and O'Neil Incorporated, one four five five zero Main Street, Suite four hundred, Springfield, Mass. zero one one zero three. The subject project is located at one hundred to one hundred fifty Maple Avenue, on the northerly side of Maple Avenue and consists in whole or in part Shoesbury Assessor's Tax Plate twenty-seven, plot three nine one zero zero, and tax plate twenty-one, plot one oh one zero zero one. Copy of the application, plans, and reports may be seen in the office of Planning and Economic Development Department at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, one hundred Maple Avenue, Shoesbury, Mass., and on the Planning Board website.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. The applicant, please introduce themselves.
Good evening. Uh, thank you for having us. Uh, my name's Matt Salin. I'm a project manager for Tecton Architects. I've been managing the police station project in its entirety. And with me tonight is Dan Delaney and Jose, Josue Valdez from Fuss and O'Neil. And they have a brief presentation to go over the modifications to the previously approved site plan for the police station site. And with that, I'll turn it over to Josue.
Oh, thank you, Matt. So as Matt said, um, we are pretty much here to discuss the proposed, um, site plan modification through the previously approved, um, police department. Our agenda is just to do a quick overview of the previously approved design and then just, um, show you what we are proposing and, um, a brief explanation of the newer stormwater being pissed, um, to treat the stormwater. The first sheet, um, we can see the previously approved site plan, um, with, um, the proposed stormwater. Um, as we know, like, you know, most of the building is already constructed on site. We can see the, the parking lots and everything. And then on the left top corner of the sheet, we can see where the proposed, um, modification, um, will be. This other sheet, we can see how the proposed modification actually will, like, blend in into the previously approved site. It consists, um, an alternate drive, um, asphalt pavement, and then, um, a parking lot with thirty-five parking spaces. One of them is an accessible parking. It's gonna be a gravel parking lot. We will be, um, also, or we are proposing a detention pond, um, with a water quality unit, um, to help mitigate and treat the stormwater runoff before it leaves the site. This next sheet explains a little bit better how we are proposing to collect all the stormwater onsite from the, like, extend the limit of work, just to make sure that no additional stormwater is leaving the site untreated. And, um, that's pretty much, um, the, you know, the, the resume of what we're proposing on doing here. And, um, now if you have any questions, um, we are happy to answer it.
Mr. Jerry, any questions or comments?
No, I have none. I think it's pretty straightforward.
Mr. Odlakis?
No, I'm just assuming that the groundwater that you guys encountered was higher than you anticipated, necessitating this modification.
No, uh, the, the, the purpose of this modification was that with the original design, we were providing a single point of egress for the actual police department side of the parking area. Secure parking lot. So the purpose of this was to, was to provide a secondary, uh, drive out of the lot. A lot of the grading that you see around the drive itself, we're actually, we're actually using a little bit of the excess, um, soil that's been retained on site from the initial project.
It wasn't in part for drainage?
No, it was not. It was not because of drainage.
Okay, that's fine. I'm, I'm fine with these secondary means of egress.
I'm fine with it.
So the additional parking spaces, is that, that was something that was brought up only for the simple reason that you have to have the, you know, you're asking for an additional egress and figured you'd take advantage of this space? Because that not, that wasn't part of the original proposal?
Correct. Yeah, the, the, the drive itself is specific to the police station project and the egress. The, the parking spaces that are being created were to help offload some of the, the parking issues that they have over at the ball fields.
So that park, that parking field is, is expected to be used for residents as they're accessing the, um.
Yep.
Not necessarily for additional parking for the police department?
Not for the police department. The parking is specifically just for the public to, to use in the park area.
Okay.
It's outside the security fence.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
So it's out, yeah, so it's outside of the secured area that, that was already approved?
Yep, exactly.
Okay. Is there any questions or comments from the town side of things?
I did not have any. I thought they did a good job answering our questions that we did have, so I don't have anything. I think it's a good benefit to the town to have some additional parking. Have you seen Saturday's soccer there? And the overflow and people parking all over the grass and everywhere else. I think once I get spell, I think there'd be a benefit, so.
Will, will there be some sort of a gate or signage at the end of this so that people going to the baseball game don't?
So there is gonna be a, um, chain, um, I don't know if you can go here. Maybe you can see the two bollards on the, on the driveway.
Okay.
So the driveway is gonna be with a chain, pretty much. It's gonna be chained. It's gonna be locked. But the parking is gonna be open.
Right.
So there's not gonna be any.
So this won't be open around the clock? This would just be for special purposes?
Yeah, so the, the basic purpose is that if there's ever an incident on Maple Ave that blocks the police from egressing off of the site, this gives them a, an emergency way out. Also, uh, if you look at the grading plan, there is that, that little bit of grade on either side of the drive. That's a, that's a two-and-a-half-foot-tall just grass berm, just to give a little bit of a buffer and protection from anybody sort of driving through it and over it.
Yeah. It's actually almost three feet, so you, yeah, it will give you like a good.
Okay. Any other questions, comments from the board? This is a public hearing. Is anyone in the public that wishes to be heard? Seeing no hands, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing on the one hundred and one fifty Maple Avenue, uh, site plan modification.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. That being said, we do have a draft decision in front of us. Is there any questions or comments relative to the draft decision?
I have none.
Mr. Odlakis?
I have none.
Uh, Mr. Thomas?
I have none.
And I have none either. I'll entertain a motion on the draft decision.
Through it, and I'll confirm. I move that, uh, we, uh, authorize the clerk to execute the decision entitled Decision of the Planning Board Regarding Application for Site Plan Modification, one hundred and one fifty Maple Avenue, Shoesbury Police Station, Town of Shoesbury.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public hearing is another new public hearing. Uh, Mr. Thomas will be recusing himself. This is for a proposed four-unit multifamily development site plan approval and special permit, Lakeway Realty LLC, location fifty-five to sixty-six South Quinsigaman Avenue. Mr. Jerry, please read the public notice.
The Shoesbury Planning Board, as the special permit granting authority, will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, July fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, at seven P. M. in the Selectman's Hearing Room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, one hundred Maple Avenue, to hear the application of Lakeway Realty LLC, forty-eight Harrington Avenue, Shoesbury, Mass. zero one five four five, as required by the Town of Shoesbury zoning bylaw, section seven F three and section six, table one, for site plan approval and special permit by the Planning Board to allow for the construction of four townhouse-style dwelling units. The proposed development is shown on plans entitled Site Plan for fifty-six to sixty-six South Quinsigaman Avenue on eleven sheets dated June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, prepared by J. M. Grenier Associates Incorporated, one eighteen Turnpike Road, Suite two hundred, South Grove, Mass. zero one seven seven two, stamped by Kevin J. Jarvis, P. L. S., and John M. Grenier, P. E. The subject property is located westerly of the intersection of Villa Road and South Quinsigaman Avenue and consists in whole or in part of Shoesbury Assessor's Tax Plate thirty-eight, plot zero zero three, zero zero zero. A copy of the application, plans, and reports may be seen in the office of the Planning and Economic Development Department at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, one hundred Maple Ave, Shoesbury, Mass., and on the Planning Board website.
Thank you, Mr. Jerry. I think you please introduce themselves.
Thank you to the chair and, and members of the board. For the record, my name is Richard Ricker. I'm, I'm the attorney representing the applicant. And, um, uh, my offices are at eleven Maple Avenue. I'm here with Tom Barquette, who is, uh, the principal and the manager of, of the LLC applicant, Lakeway, and also John Grenier. As to my left, he is our engineer. Uh, this is a fairly straightforward, um, proposal, uh, calling for the, uh, removal of, uh, one building and, um, the, uh, building of, uh, two additional buildings with four units. So we're, we're removing two units and adding four. And, um, I think with respect to that, uh, John, if you would just go through the plan?
Sure. Uh, this site is located South Route nine on South Quinsigaman Avenue. It's, um, just under an acre. As Richard stated, there's five units currently on the site. There's a duplex that is tucked right up against South Quinsigaman Avenue. That two-family is going to get raised. There is, uh, an existing, uh, single unit located in the middle here. And then, I'm sorry, that's a two, that's two units. And then, uh, number sixty is, is another two units.
Two units.
Number sixty's two and number fifty-eight is one.
It is one. So, um, what we are proposing to do, as I said, is to raise the unit that's located right, right along the frontage on South Quinsigaman Ave. Uh, we'll keep the other three units and then add two townhouse-style, uh, units in the back. So the net increase is two units total on the site. In order to provide adequate access and parking, uh, we are maintaining the existing access on South Quinsigman Av- Avenue, which is pretty much directly across from Villa Road. We are reconfiguring and maintaining, but reconfiguring the parking, um, that services the existing units in this location, uh, right along the frontage. And there's a, a walkway that leads from that parking to those existing units. And then for the additional units that we're building, basically, we're providing two parking spaces for each unit. So we have two parking spaces associated with unit seven, two for number six, two for number five, two for number four. And we provide a twenty-foot-wide access drive to come into the site. That necks down a little bit for the, for the last unit. We did sit down with the deputy fire chief to make sure he was fine for, um, access and egress through the site. So we have correspondence with the deputy fire chief. Um, and he's comfortable with, with the layout and the access and the width of the, the driveway that accesses the units. Um, we did get comments from Graves Engineering. Um, in, in general, they're fine with the drainage. The drainage that we are proposing is to, um, capture, basically, everything sheet flows, um, away from South Quinsigman Ave. The lowest spot is down in this corner. And we're sheet flowing the, the water down into, um, catch basin structure. Again, we're treating the water and then, uh, we're recharging into the ground. There was some fill in this area, but below that, there was some decent soils. But there is quite a bit of fill that was placed on this site. So we're gonna be digging that out and installing, um, a series of subsurface recharge chambers. There was a, um, a question from the planning department about, um, providing some additional overflow parking spaces. We do provide adequate parking spaces based on zoning. And if it's the wish of the board, I know we're gonna have a meeting in, in a few weeks. Um, we went through the comments. We have, uh, looked at ways that we can address that. Across from the parking that's associated for the existing units, we could also add four parking spaces, uh, for overflow for, for visitor spaces, if that's the.
If that's something you want.
If, if that's the, the wish of the board. Um, a- another area, another comment, I think it was from Graves, actually, was for delivery vehicles, whether it's, I don't know, you get a UPS truck, you get an Amazon truck, to have a, if people are in these existing park, are in the proposed parking spaces, um, to give them an area to turn around. And we have adequate area right in this central part where if they came in, they could do a three-point turn and get out and, um, not have to rely on having one of the parking spaces open from one of the units. There is, um, in terms of buffering from properties, uh, there's the condos that are, uh, to the south and to the west. There's, um, condo number sixty-eight right here. That's a multi-unit building. They're quite a bit lower than us. There's a retaining wall there. They have very thick evergreens, um, on top of a retaining wall. And then there's an existing six-foot-high, uh, fence that, that surrounds the entire property. So in terms of screening from other properties, we really don't have an issue with that. And then adjacent to us at the north is the, the parking lot for the Lithuanian club. So that's one big huge parking lot. So we don't have any issues with screening from the butters there. So, um, we are doing some, um, screening within the site to screen the driveway from units two and three. And each unit will have its own post lamp, just residential style, you know, nothing commercial in terms of. And each unit will have its own post lamp, just residential style, you know, nothing commercial in terms of lighting. It'd just be six-foot-high lamp posts, so very residential in size. That's really the long and short of it. At the end of the day, we're adding two units, really improving the property, formalizing some of the parking that's associated with these units, and getting rid of a non-conforming structure that's located really right on top of South Quinsigamet Ave. So we're thinking overall it's a real good improvement to the property. He's upgrading his property. And we're going to be building just nice, affordable units on the site, so that's it.
Affordable, meaning that they'll be considered?
We're not going to do a sheet conversation.
Affordable units?
Let's not go down that road.
No, we're only adding two.
Two affordable units?
If I could approach it, and because I know you like this. See what the renovations are going to be like as opposed to the neighboring units?
I appreciate that. I told you, you're going to be the gold standard.
We did a, we did a survey, Tom did the survey, thank you, Tom, of the surrounding properties, and you can see that the heights of the proposed units are within a couple of feet, basically, of everything around them. So I would suggest, therefore, respectfully, that it's in keeping with the neighborhood. And as John said, this is a vast improvement to this parcel. And if you want that visitor parking spaces, then we would put them in and hope that you would approve the plan the next meeting.
Okay. Is that all you have? I was going to ask the board, any questions? Mr. Jerry, any questions or comments?
I have none.
Mr. Rotalakis?
No, I agree with Mr. Rickar. I, you know, I either walk or drive and/or both by this property every day. And I think removal of the structure on the road will be a big improvement. It's a big site, and the addition of two units, it's a site that can easily absorb it. And I know that Mr. Paquette has shown that he's done a good job in the past. I trust he'll do a good job with this.
You're good. There was a conversation I had with the town planner regarding the parking, not necessarily the additional parking, but potential for handicap parking. Is that something?
So it's a question that came up. It was actually raised by DPW, and the director of DPW actually raised it. And you're welcome to either clarify it tonight or not, whether they're going to be rent or ownership.
It's going to be rental.
So the understand, this is, I am not the, whatever you call it, accessibility person in town. So I put the comment in there. You can either address it tonight or both in writing back to us in the letter.
I would.
About whether handicap spaces are required for rental units, so.
No.
That's okay. You can disagree. If you could just put that in writing back to us, I think that would be appreciated, and I can share that with the people who brought it up in town.
Okay. I haven't found anything that requires it. I can tell you that.
And that wouldn't be, wouldn't that be an issue for the building department, too?
Yeah, that was one of, they brought it up as well, so a few people brought it up.
We can approve it, and if you had to come back, because they wouldn't issue a building permit, we could make a.
We don't want to see a delay, though. It's a result of that. So I'll work it out between now and the next meeting. I'll make sure that we.
We can approve it, and if you had to come back, because they didn't issue a building permit, they wouldn't, we could do a de minimis change. He's got more than enough area in that site to
Right.
absorb a couple of parking spaces.
I agree, but I think it's probably more efficient if I address it with the building department tomorrow and just get this thing wrapped up.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm only waiting on the response to the planner comments and Graves' comments and otherwise. And I brought up the issue in my comments about the visitor parking, only because it's been raised by board members before for other sites. So it's up to the four of you to discuss that. I just wanted to bring it up.
I'm perfectly in line with having the additional parking for the overflow, especially where it is somewhat limited in front of the structures themselves. So to have a little bit of extra space off to the side for overflow parking, I think, would be.
Four parking spaces?
Yeah.
Are you okay with four parking spaces?
I think four would be fine. You think four?
Miss, fine if it's required. Otherwise, I'd be okay with closing and approving, and he could come back if there was an issue with.
Well, we don't have responses yet.
We can't close today anyways.
Oh, we can't close today?
No, we're going to continue anyways.
You don't have responses?
We don't have responses yet, no.
In the meantime.
From us?
I don't have the planner responses or the responses to Graves.
Yeah.
No, we made the changes, and then I wasn't sure if we should be submitting them, you know, a couple days before, so we said.
It's three weeks to the next meeting, so.
Three weeks, and we sort of get the decision written up.
Okay.
I have it most drafted already.
Let's figure it out.
These final.
Okay.
So we get, so we get the responses, we deal with the handicap issue and wrap it up.
That can all get resolved by August third, right?
Yes.
Absolutely.
August fourth, Steve.
Yep.
You're going to be here on the third, and no one else?
I'll be here on the third, fourth, fifth, sixth, just so I don't miss anything.
Okay.
Okay. Unless there's any other comments. Comments, this is a public hearing. Is anyone in the public that wishes to be heard? Not seeing any hands. I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing.
I move that we continue the public hearing on the site plan approval and special permit for multifamily townhouse of fifty-five through sixty-six South Quinsigamet Avenue until August third, Thursday, August third, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven P. M.
Fourth, August fourth.
I said that on purpose.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public hearing is a continued public hearing for a proposed collisions center site plan approval, M. A. G. R. E. Holdings, eight hundred Boston Turnpike, location four twenty Boston Turnpike. We have another request for continuance. Does anybody have any questions or comments relative to the continuance request? Anybody having a problem with continuing?
No.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I move we grant the request of the applicant for the continuance for four twenty Boston Turnpike until Thursday, August fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven P. M.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And our final public hearing is a continued public hearing for one Greenbrier Road, over fifty-five Housing Development Site Plan Approval and Special Permit, Cypress Avenue Development LLC, location one Greenbrier Road and one six nine R. Gulf Street. I also have a request for continuance for this project. Does anybody have questions or comments relative to the continuance request?
I have none.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to continue this public hearing.
I move that we grant the continuance as requested by the applicant for the Greenbrier Cypress Ave project until Thursday, August fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven P. M.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That takes care of all of our open hearings. Our next item of business is a new business. Discuss and vote on issuance of bond for eight hundred Turnpike, I'm sorry, eight hundred Boston Turnpike. I have a bond here in the amount of three thousand, four hundred and one dollars and thirteen cents. And this is for sativa. Does anybody have any questions or comments relative to that? Okay, entertain a motion.
I move that we authorize the bond for sativa of, in the amount of three thousand, four hundred, one dollars and thirteen cents relative to eight hundred Boston Turnpike.
Does anybody, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And our final item on the business is to endorse the Planning Board Member Appointment Confirmation Sheet. Pass this around. If you could just sign your name next to your written name, I'd appreciate it.
And also, Mr. Chairman, there could be a motion to appoint the town engineer as the approver for A. and R. plans.
I move that we authorize the delegation of the town engineer to execute the A. and R. plans where he feels appropriate.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Because otherwise, if he doesn't feel it's appropriate, he should come to us.
Definitely. If you want more to do.
No, there have been instances where, in the past, I'm not saying under this engineer or the prior that we kind of scratched our heads, it's like.
I'm sure Mr. Chairman will tell you if he needs to bring it, if he's got him, he's not one too shy where.
His name is on that list.
He doesn't have to be on there.
He's on the bottom of. Oh, it is.
Okay. Do you know, can do it?
Perfect. Keep throwing the guy under the bus tonight.
Okay.
Thank you for.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to conclude this hearing.
I move that we conclude this evening's public hearings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bernie.
Thanks, everyone.